No, he's got it. You got it?
All right.
I have it.
We'll call the order. Welcome everyone to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for January 6th, 2015. And we're going to start tonight with a Governor Stoughton meeting. We had an error in the agenda initially. We inadvertently left off an item, an agenda item for meeting the Governor Stoughton trustees. So we've since reposted it and added it in on the advice of Town Council. We are entertaining a request for a further extension of the due diligence period. Now, because it was not fully noticed for the 48-hour period, we're going to just grant a short-term extension tonight until our next meeting, and then take up the issue at the next meeting. So our next meeting, I believe everyone's free on the 13th, which is next Tuesday. So do we have a motion to extend the due diligence period until January 13th?
Tom Wood, second.
Any discussion? Bill, is there anything that you wanted to add regarding this request?
I just want you to take in these two for the next meeting and just get ready to be discussed, the definition of a buffer zone.
Done.
Okay. And that's the, that's relative to the request for the due diligence extension period. Is there anything else on this, anyone?
No.
And all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. So we'll adjourn the Governor Stoughton trustees' meeting. Thank you, Bill. And we are on to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. We're going to take a couple of items out of order so that we can have our DPW Director, Joe Lynch, who has to leave early, join us at the start. So Joe, would you like to come up and join us at the table? Why don't we start with number eight, which is your technical assistance grant. Good evening, Joe.
Thank you. You may recall that we had sought out permission this past October and then again last year to participate in a community innovation challenge grant. We received that grant last year. We had our applications submitted in time this year, except the program fell to the governor's 5C cuts and has been eliminated. The consortium that we belong to, that groups together to look at Stormwater Initiative feel that there's still a possibility that we could move forward in what's called a technical assistance grant through the MAC, Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. So we're asking, again, I guess really two things, is to not necessarily revoke the prior approval, but just simply it doesn't, it's not needed anymore because the grant program's not there. But more importantly, to extend our authoriz- your authorization for us to participate in the technical assistance grant. At this point in time, there is likely to be a local pledge amount of $5,000, the same amount that we were looking to pledge under the other programs, and we will just carry that same funding over to this new program.
And there is no pledge for the second one, right?
There is. I mean, they're, right now, it's not identified, but they're likely might be. So I think the authorization would also authorize us to expend that $5,000 should the, should a match be necessary.
And they're both $45,000 grants, or?
The technical assistance grant is really a services grant. It's not really an expenditure of funds.
Okay, gotcha.
Right, we're getting services out of the, out of the association.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to apply for two MAPC technical assistance grants to further the pilot study of creating a stormwater utility in Milton as follows. One in conjunction with the Nippon-Zet Stormwater Partnership pledging the same $5,000 match previously pledged to the CIC grant project, and one with no financial match necessary, and to authorize the town administrator to sign letters of support for both grant applications.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, Joe is also here for number five, which is a continued hearing on an unbilled sewer charge for 329 Canton Avenue. I don't see the applicant, Mary Moore, here tonight. She was contacted by this office and indicated that she may not be able to attend tonight.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Should we take this up at this time rather than waiting further?
I think we move ahead.
Okay. All right. Then, Joe, if you'd like to stay in case we have any further questions, why don't I, so we'll reconvene the hearing for the 329 Canton Avenue unbilled sewer charges. Was there anyone else who was here tonight on this topic, either on behalf of Ms. Moore, or the estate, or anyone else? None. Okay. Then, when we met last in December, we, we had a lengthy discussion with Ms. Moore, who is the executor of the estate of her parents, who lived at 329 Canton Avenue. The house has been sold. We understand that the funds for the approximately $5,500 in unbilled sewer charges for the past four-year period, four out of six years, six years being the length of time that we can go back under our unbilled sewer policy, are being held in an escrow account by the closing attorney who handled the sale of the home. Ms. Moore did not live there. This is her parents' home. She was there, she was here representing their estate. And she raised a couple of issues which related to essentially fairness, that the policy in general was unfair, and more specifically, that she believed the retroactive application of the policy was unfair. And Ms. Moore indicated that she had contacted the DPW. She mentioned, Joe, that she had had a conversation with you at one point sometime last year. She understood that the charges would not be collected retroactively. It would only be a prospective application. And I understand that that's not your recollection of the, of the conversation.
That's, there was no conversation that took place. Not to any extent, but there was no conversation whatsoever.
Between you and Ms. Moore?
That's correct.
Okay. I suppose it's possible she spoke with someone else in your department?
I've asked folks in my department if they had any other conversations. There's really only two other people in the department who handle situations regarding the water and sewer issue. And one is in our central business office, who had no conversation with that person, until after the appeal period. And another person who is working in my department directly, who's handling the day-to-day investigation piece of it, he had no conversation with that person.
I suppose, had even, you know, at the time that it happened, there was no agreement in place to backcharge it. In any event, I don't believe, right?
Um, I, as, as Selectmen, you recall just how cautious we were as we were crafting the policy. It, as-
We didn't have a policy in place at the time.
We didn't have a policy in place, but through the entire process of crafting it, it was always the thought that we were going back some-
Some period of time.
-distance in time, whether it was the full extent of all of the years, whether it was to the non-disputable amount of six years that ultimately came out of the process of Town Council's research, or then ultimately what the amnesty program might ultimately offer for relaxation. It was never contemplated that we'd go back and collect nothing.
Right.
Okay. What we've been able to determine, my understanding through talking to Michael Blanchard, is that the home was connected to sewer at the time it was built, I believe 1979. So for about 35 years, it's been connected to town sewer. At the time that the connection was made, there was no separate billing for sewer charges. I've had a conversation with a great Milton institution, former town administrator, John Cronin, who gave me a little bit of history on this, and has said that at one time sewer was billed through the property tax. And it was never a separate bill until sometime after Proposition Two and a Half came into effect in the 1980s. There was a committee headed up by former moderator, Rick Ward, that handled the conversion to a separate billing system. And it sounds like it was a very detailed process that took place, and a lot of work by a committee that went into effect. But in any event, the home has been connected to town sewer for a long time. So, and the charges had not been billed, we believe through clerical era at whatever town department it was. So there's, we should emphasize, there's no fault alleged by the estate, by Ms. Moore's parents. And she presented a sympathetic case. She, both of her parents died within a very short time period. She's had a very difficult year. Obviously, I think we can all understand how, how difficult the circumstances must be with, with two parents dying within a month of each other. And she had been assisting them with handling their bills. Her mother was blind. She, she gave a lot of testimony about the situation that she was dealing with over the last several years, I believe. She, the question that came up at the time, at the last meeting, was whether the sprinkler system in the home would be a cause for any relief. And there's no, she, she indicated there's no separate meter. Sometimes if you have a sprinkler, in order to avoid sewer charges, you put it on a separate meter so that it, it doesn't incur those costs, because that water is not, it's going into the ground, but it's not really impacting the sewer. And there's no reason for sewer charges on those. Joe can correct me if I'm misstating anything here. We've looked into that issue. I know, Tom, you raised the point-
Yep.
-that maybe that's something worth looking into. And my understanding is the policy of the town, and Joe can speak to this, is that we don't normally, if a person does not have a second meter installed for a sprinkler system, there's not, there had been many requests for abatement of sewer charges, but they're not typically, they're never granted.
I can't speak, you know, prior to my arriving in town here, but I can tell you that it's been conveyed to me that it was a longstanding practice way before I got here. But since I've been here, we deal with dozens, if not 100, cases of this type of inquiry every single year. And we have never, not, not often, we have never adjusted a sewer bill under those circumstances. What we have done, and we do it under very carefully documented situation where a plumbing problem has, has happened, a leakage that can be documented, plumbing, plumber came in and repaired it with the bill. And we can determine that that failure, whether it's an outside pipe or outside faucet, if we can determine that, that we have in fact granted relief of sewer charges under that documented circumstances, and only those documented circumstances. So that's not the case that's happened here. And we do have, in fact, I spoke with a gentleman this morning, completely unrelated, on this very, the exact same situation.
So just to sum up where we are for the board, we're, we have a request for some relief based on a fairness argument. There's, there has not been an allegation that there's any inability to pay. And clearly, the funds are sitting in an escrow account, so the funds are, are available. We're seeking to go back for a four-year period. So the policy itself provided a two-year amnesty for the initial round of properties that were discovered, I believe it was around 22 homes, and also for anyone else who subsequently discovered, or actually before they're subsequently discovered, anyone who comes forward voluntarily, because it saves us some administrative work, Joe, your department in particular, of having to go out and run tests, or do some follow-up and, and check into the situation. So the $5,500 represents approximately four years of sewer charges. The home has had the benefit of sewer service for 35 years. And we could go back six years. We're going back four years, and the applicant, on fairness grounds, has asked for further relief. And so I think the discussion for us tonight is, although Ms. Moore couldn't be here, she did give extensive testimonies, not the right word, but she, she gave a lot of information to us at the last meeting.
Yeah, I guess, under the policy that we created, the only, the only leeway we gave for relief was either hardship, or there was, there was an error in, in the charge somehow, you know, that the property was acquired later than that, or, you know, some other, you know, problem with it. There was nothing for, unfortunately, sprinkler relief. So, so I don't think there's anything within the policy that would give us the ability without going totally against the policy that we've written to, to give any relief here.
I agree with that despite the circumstances that Ms. Moore's in. And again, she is not a resident of the town. She did not have as much notice of this retroactive look-back period as others who live in town might have. So I understand that she, when she got the bill, she was surprised by it. And, and, but I, but I, my view would be the same, that there's not grounds under the policy in this particular case. There's not an inability to pay that's been alleged. Fairness is something we took into consideration when we created the policy almost, well, about a year ago. It was adopted finally in the spring, but we met during the course of the winter months.
But is inability to pay, is that, is that a reason to, to give relief?
If it's shown-
Financial hardship.
Yeah. She hasn't alleged that. She's alleged fairness. And again, the funds are available in an escrow account.
I think the pol-, if I may, the policy says that means testing formula shall be established. So given a criteria established, which I don't know if that's happened, but you know, if there's means testing, it would allow not so much forgiveness, but maybe it's a restructuring of a repayment plan. Or some, basically, it leaves it open to you people to consider. But I think the first piece is, you know, means testing.
This is the first appeal we've had. And there has been a preliminary appeal with Mr. Blanchard, the Assistant Town Administrator, who denied the request, which, and the applicant brought it to this board.
When Mr. Blanchard interviewed the applicant, I'm wondering, and he's sitting over here, I'm wondering if you did ask that question about some relief because of inability to pay? Did you ask that question?
Michael, just for the sake of the microphones, would you like to come up to the table? Thank you.
I'd have to review the tape. I don't recall that specific line of questioning. It wasn't alleged in her initial, you know, appeal, and she didn't bring it up. I don't recall asking that specific question, though, no.
I'm just wondering if that was one of your criteria. That's one of your questions that you would ask, if any future people come in front of you.
Certainly, we could be more specific. Generally, again, this was the only hearing, but we, I essentially just opened it up to her to provide any information, any testimony. Again, that's not a great word. And left it up to her to present her case.
Well, I mean, I know I brought this up at the last meeting, but, you know, kind of had a change of heart. Once I started reading into it, yes, they did have the 30 years of unbilled sewer charges, and we are only going back four, which I think is probably very fair, considering we could go back six. You know, if we start granting relief for, and plus, they sold the house. So there's absolutely no financial hardship, I believe. And they're not town residents. So in my opinion, at this stage, I think we should, we should deny it and just move forward.
That seems to be the sense of the board. So would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to not grant relief under the request for abatement of the water and sewer charges, of the sewer charge for the four-year period. Second.
Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Okay, Joe, thank you very much for staying. Michael, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Michael.
Okay, we are now going to return to the top of the agenda. And we have meeting minutes for three dates in November to approve.
Move approval of November 12th, 2014 minutes.
I'll second. I just have one change on November 12th. And it's just, it might be a typo. It's number, number five. Cheryl Flightman, representing Boston Fair skies, updated the board on runway 4L instead of just L.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It makes a difference, I think.
Okay. Any other changes? You seconded that, Dennis?
I second it, yeah.
Okay.
I just had one question on number 11, and you can answer this. Is this correct, is this a correct amount, Tom and Katie, that we, the $67,000?
Yes.
That was in addition to the original amount approved?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
That's right.
That was confusing.
Okay, then, with those changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. November 19th.
Move approval of November 19th, 2014 minutes.
Second.
Changes, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And November 26th?
I only move approval of November 26th, 2014 minutes. Second.
Any changes or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, future meeting dates. We're scheduled to meet on January 13th, which is a week from tonight. You're also, I sent an email, I, at the request of the chairman of the Town Government Study Committee, I was at their meeting last night. We can talk more about that when we get to the warrant articles. But we, that committee scheduled a meeting, well, they, they chose three dates in order to have a joint meeting with us, with a representative of the Mass Municipal Association to discuss the Strong Town Administrator article. The first date that was available is Monday, January 12th, the night before our next meeting, at 6:00.
I can't make any Mondays, but I mean, go ahead. You, you guys can go ahead.
Are you sure about that?
Absolutely.
I probably communicated that to me, but-
I mean, you're going to discuss writing an article for the May town meeting with regards to a strong town administrator, right?
Correct.
Yeah. We're going to discuss the recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah.
The articles, the articles already been drafted by John Flynn, but the recommendation is going to be based on the job descriptions. And I brought copies of the job description from two years ago, but Rick Neely's also going to be sending us a more updated one that they discussed last night that we have not yet seen. And I, I didn't receive it this afternoon. I think they had a lot of work to do today on the articles with a lot of follow-ups. So we'll probably get that tomorrow or Thursday.
Yeah, I'm okay with you with not attending it on Monday. You guys can go ahead.
If that's, if that's okay with you, Dennis?
I'm fine with that.
And Tom, you, you have a Capitol meeting earlier in the evening, but-
Yeah, but I should be able to, yeah.
Okay. And the town administrator is free also.
Yes, I'm, okay.
Paula, are you available that night?
I'm sure.
Okay. All right. We can't meet without Mrs. Rizzi. All right, so we'll meet then on Monday, the 12th, at 6:00. We need to reserve a conference room, probably the Blute Room for that, given the number of people.
I'd say, yeah, probably.
We'll figure that out, what's available. And we'll meet on the 13th. The 20th, I believe, is the-
20th is the Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission hearing. So did we want to meet another night that week? You know, we're, we're avoiding the last week in January.
Wednesday, the 21st. Madam Chair, we will have to meet to sign the new bonds, the repurposed bonds.
Say that again, Emery.
We will have to meet on January 21st. We will be, the board will have to sign some new bonds-
Oh, yeah.
-when we are going out and refunding.
Is that the only reason for meeting, or do we have anything else on the agenda?
We don't have anything else on the agenda at this point.
We haven't scheduled anything for that night yet, but there's-
I'm sure there's always something.
Yeah, I think we're going to have a lot, we're trying to schedule the Sign Review Committee to come in and-
I'm available.
Some other thing. The 21st?
Yep.
21st.
Okay, so let's schedule then January 12th, 13th, and 21st. 13th and the 21st at 7:00 PM, and 6:00 PM on the 12th. Okay, next item is payroll and vendor warrants.
Move approval of the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Citizen Speak. I know we have a few people here to talk with us tonight. Citizen Speak. Cindy Christensen is first. Good evening, Cindy.
Hi.
Cindy.
Hi. Hi, Tom. I'm Dr. Cindy Christensen. I live at 59 Collmar Street, and I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 7. The day after Christmas, I was in a passenger seat of my sister's car going the short distance from my home in East Milton to East Milton Square. At three four-way stop intersections, we stopped, but the drivers in cars going another direction ran right through the intersection. After this happened the third time, my sister asked me if S-T-O-P means something different in Milton than in the rest of the country. I had to admit that in East Milton, many drivers think it means G-O, and go with almost no worries of being stopped and ticketed. This happened on the side streets east of the highway, but the traffic on Granite Ave and Bryant Boulevard also posed substantial risk, particularly for pedestrians. Even though many residents in East Milton have made known their concerns about these traffic and pedestrian dangers, the chief recently wrote that he talked with the school committee to let them know that he knew of nothing dangerous in East Milton Square. There are no crossing guards for public school children and their parents who need to cross Granite Ave and Bryant Boulevard. Many of us routinely experience a near miss when in the crosswalk in front of the post office, and even drivers tell stories of the dangers for people and cars in this area. One of your department heads recently commented that Milton Police Department doesn't issue more tickets because people in Milton don't want them to. If this is true, I'd like to know who gets to make this decision to not enforce the laws that would make our neighborhood safer. You want development in our neighborhood, I do too. But make sure we are protected and have the same services as other parts of town, from street paving to street cleaning, and even more importantly, traffic and parking enforcement and police protection around the highway and in our neighborhood streets. Ask the question, how many moving violations were issued in East Milton last month? What about last year? Make this part of your reporting requirements. No longer accept the response, there's nothing we can do, or let's form a committee, or let's have another meeting to discuss this, or this will all be better when the parking project is complete. If it's lack of police resources, take the officer who now posts weather reports, ways to fix broken pipes, and gives guidance on how parents should dress their children for Halloween off of Police Department Facebook duties and onto Traffic Patrol. Please do something now to make East Milton and our neighborhood streets safer from these traffic violators. Without making residents make one more phone call, write one more email, attend one more meeting, or come to one more Citizen Speak. Other towns figure out preventative actions to take. Why can't the employees of this town do the same? My suggestion is to try strategic and persistent police enforcement as a preventative measure. But whatever you do, do something. Let's not wait for the first pedestrian injury or death to rally our resources and community values in an attempt to prevent the second. Expect your police department to do something now. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Cindy. Citizen Speak. Who else would like to address the board at Citizen Speak? Good evening, Harriet.
Good evening.
Hello.
Very briefly. My name is Harriet Manning, and I would like to speak briefly concerning the Swift Hat House and its preservation. The Swift House is located in Milton Village. There are two other concerned citizens besides myself who are acting as an informal committee to save the Swift House from demolition. We feel that there have been too many historical structures in Milton that have been demolished in the past few years. Our original goal was to bring the plight of this house to the attention of both the Milton public and to the leaders of our town. We feel that we have achieved part of this goal. Now we are asking what the steps, what the next steps will be, and what we can do as this informal committee to move this project along. Any suggestions of further action would be appreciated. We would also like to know if a decision has been made as to which town department has responsibility for the lot, to which the house may in time be moved. Thank you for your time and consideration in this important town matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harriet.
Harriet.
Good evening, Janet.
Janet Christensen, lifelong resident, et cetera, et cetera, town meeting member.
What's your street address, Janet, just for the record?
24 Gordon Road, East Milton.
Thank you.
Okay, so I couldn't enlarge the print. Something was wrong on my printer. But I do want to say that I'm in the same group as Harriet, and we have a fledgling committee growing. We have a lawyer, actually, in our group. We also have one of the Ophils from Thea Nursery in our group. And we have a very nice person back here, Joanna Sphinx, who's been very active lately in finding a good recommendation for our cause through the Seminole State Historic Commission. Is that correct? I think that's the name of it. Okay, but anyway, this year would be the 225th anniversary of that house, because it's the oldest commercial building in this category, this commercial category. And so that is quite remarkable, that it's the 225th anniversary. Okay, we want to capture the interest of Milton residents, many of them. And we want to get the commu-, get the communication out about the history and facts, and find new factor, new partners. And we're working on it. We would like to raise funds. And in the past, I have done a 501(c)(3) for a state agricultural group, so I know how to do it. We also, as I said, have a lawyer on our small growing committee. But another idea is working with a local bank in town who might assist us in the process, and also eventually serve as a bank that would be the one that we would, you know, use for depositing of funds. What else can I tell you? I talked recently with Brian Doherty, Chairman of the Historical Committee, and he's very interested in this project. He had several good ideas, and of course, you know the Historic Commission is. I also talked this week to the owner of the property, because he was very outgoing, and a few of us have met with him some months ago, but he was also at the Wharf Walk that you were at. So he does want to save the Swift Shop, fortunately, and he owns it. But the town needs perhaps to work more with him on his other interests and ideas that he has, too. So I'm not opposed personally, this is, I'm not speaking for the committee, to the moving of the Swift Shop to another location, because where would the Suffolk Resolves House be if generous residents had not come to its rescue? And it seems to be in a very good location where it is, and a lot of things can happen there. It's good property. So there are doubtless many Milton history buffs, I believe, whose attention we can capture. And I was thinking this afternoon that actually the 5th grade history committee, with all those kids going around to the historic sites in town, how exciting it would be for young children to learn about this old property that is older than any of its kind in the country. So that's a new idea I just happen to have. And so we hope to find a way to enlist all kinds of people's support in the town for a new beginning for the Swift Hat Job. beginning for the Swift Hat Shop. And of course, we depend on your support and endorsement or whatever it would be, but we are a committee. We're growing, and we want to work with you if we can.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else tonight for Citizen Speak? Okay, then we will move on to recover number five. We will go on to the annual town meeting articles. Okay, so we'll need a motion to close the warrant tonight. Is that correct?
Close.
Oh, have we already? Do we need to actually move to close it?
We usually do that when we sign the warrant, don't we? Yes, so that'll be at your next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. So tonight at 5:00 PM was the deadline for submitting warrant articles for the May town meeting, and we have a number of articles that have been submitted by various boards and committees, including this board. We have a citizen petition. Should we go through some of them? Mrs. Rizzi has prepared a list of articles, or she's calling Articles N1 through, N17. What we're going to do, I just, I had a conversation with the Chair of the Warrant Committee over the weekend. When we had Brian Walsh, the town moderator and others, at our meeting a few weeks ago now, we talked about ways to improve the town meeting. One of the suggestions was that we could email the articles out to the town meeting members shortly after the warrant closes, so we're going to do that. Mrs. Rizzi, Mrs. Fagan, and I have talked about how we might handle this, and I did relay our suggestion to Ted Hayes, who was in agreement with it, that we're going to compile one document of all the articles, not only the new articles, the 17 that we have in this package, but also the budget, the revolving fund.
Boilerplate.
The other articles, and number them, which we usually do at the end, but number them in advance, prepare the index in advance. It's going to take us about a week to do that because the office, you know, we have a vacant position in the office. We have a lot of articles from different sources that we need to proof and go through and get them all into one document, and then figure out the numbering of them. But Warrant Committee Chair thought that that would be very helpful. Some, the old practice used to be that the numbering would change sometimes, and somebody's talking about Article 17 at the Warrant Committee for three months, and then it becomes Article 43 in April, right before we go to the printer, and that gets confusing. So the Warrant Committee was in agreement with that, and we'll try to.
Just send them out.
Follow that process. Yes, and then, and then we electronically transmit this through the town clerk's office to town meeting members.
Right. I guess the only, the only concern I have is you sending out the articles without any recommendations or comments on them. Some of them are straightforward. Some of them are just going to be more confusing than helpful without, without recommendations and comments.
They may be, but I think, well, probably, I'm su, but the sense of that meeting that we had on ways to improve the town meeting was to get them out early so that there could be more discussion and people could know what's coming and watch as the process unfolds. Now the Warrant Committee's televised, so.
So you can send them out multiple times, you know, with the recommendations and.
Yeah, at the end.
Maybe revised recommendations. So you could send them out three or four times before the actual printed one goes out.
Yeah, that's possible, yes.
Yeah.
Right, because they do evolve, obviously. I mean, and clearly, at least one, the one I'm going to talk to tonight, probably will wind up having to change.
Mm-hmm.
Because we had.
We have to.
We had a conversation with our bond consultant, and it's probably not in the correct format right now.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so.
But that's where it will change over to.
What we can do is draft a letter to go with it to explain that there may be changes coming.
That is a great idea, though.
Yeah, I don't even recall who suggested it, but it was a good suggestion.
It's good to get information out, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we'll plan to do that. It'll be about a week or so, maybe a little bit longer before it goes out to town meeting members. But in the meantime, the budget articles and the revolving funds and the other things are typically the same. I will mention, Mr. Cronin pointed out to me that we should check with Town Council on Articles 2, 3, and 4 that are the standard 2, 3, and 4 in the warrant every year, because one of the DOR recommendations is that, and these all relate to authorizations to the treasurer that are granted unanimously without any discussion at town meeting. The DOR report recommends that those are not needed because they're duplicative of what's already allowed by state law. So Mr. Cronin's suggestion was that we possibly remove Articles 2, 3, and 4, but we'd want to check that with Town Council first to make sure that he's in agreement with the DOR report. So it's possible that those may come out and then during the course of the next week. And the town administrator has indicated we would have a motion to approve.
Approve the.
The warrant articles.
The warrant and close the warrant next week.
Okay.
So you want to go through them all, Katie?
Yeah, well, we could at least go through a couple of them and, or some of them and talk about what they are. We may not want to address all of them tonight, but Article N1, why don't we just refer to them as 1, 2, and 3? So the first one is to transfer the landfill access road from municipal dump purposes to general purposes. Our town planning director is here, Bill. If there's anything that you want to be heard on, feel free to come up and join us at the table. The second one is the Strong Town Administrator article. I can give a bit of an update on this one because I, I went to the Government Study Committee meeting last night, and I, and at our last meeting, we talked about the fact that the approach would be that our board and the town government study committee would submit this article jointly. It's an, it's an article that asks for authorization to submit a home rule petition to determine what powers the town administrator under a strong town administrator form of government would have. Now we, what we'd like, and what the Warrant Committee Chair was in agreement with this proposal, was that we would take the next four to six weeks to propose the recommendations. So that's what our meeting on Monday night will involve. We have a job description. I brought copies of it tonight that was prepared by the Government Study Committee two years ago, and they are, and I didn't realize this until recently, they are preparing an updated description that we don't yet have, but we will get within the next couple of days. Does anyone need a copy of the, the description from two years? This is the, number five is just the section of the report that, this is the Government Studies Committee's report from 2013. Number five is the recommendation, and the job description is three pages, and we've seen it before. We haven't discussed it recently, but they are working on an update. So what, in advance of Monday night's meeting, what we could do is, any comments on the new version or on this current version, we could submit by email and have them available so that, because if you're not going to be able to be there Monday night, Dennis, then you may want to submit written comments in advance.
I will.
Okay. One of the questions that was raised last night was the, we should have some sense of what the board's view is on, for example, this is an example that I think came up last night, or if not, it came up on a telephone call I had with, with Rick Nailley, was whether the board would want to delegate to the town administrator or retain at the board level the hiring of the deputy police chief. So that's something that we'll want to discuss and see if we're on the same page with the town government study committee, and we could have a discussion about that tonight if anyone would like to, or we could just defer the discussion until Monday night.
Better deferring it. I mean, I think we all have our opinions on, but without giving it a little bit of thought, I think. I think as a general statement, my idea is to, my idea would be ultimately for the board of selectmen to eventually be more of a policy setting and oversight board.
Mm-hmm.
And let the day-to-day running of town government be that of management. So that being said, I'm probably in favor of, you know, less is more.
And transferring something like that to the town administrator rather than to the board.
Right.
Yeah, one of the questions that came up last night from the Government Study Committee meeting was, one member was asking whether there's a commonality of vision on this and whether we're all on the same page, and, and I told them that I, I think we are. You know, we've talked a number of times over the last year and a half that I've been on the board, and we've even delegated additional duties to the town administrator. So we've talked about going towards more of a policy board and transferring more of the hiring responsibilities and other responsibilities to the town administrator to make that a, quote-unquote, "strong town administrator role."
Right.
So it sounds like we'd have broad general agreement that maybe particular issues we'd want to talk about on Monday night, that, and whether their committee would be in full agreement on everything remains to be seen, too, but.
Right. Right, I mean, and there's a lot of sticky issues still. I mean, you know, number one is, you know, attracting that person eventually that is going to be that, you know, really strong leader that you need, what that's going to cost. I mean, it's, you know, clearly, a lot, a lot of issues that, you know, that have to be thought out, and the fact that we still have somewhat of a disaggregated town government and how that fits and all that.
Well, that's, that's a big issue, and they, they didn't really get into that last night, but I know that their, that committee has discussed that issue over time, which is that the financial management of the town is really held in different elected boards and elected officials, such as the town treasurer, who is not under this board. He's an elected official, reports to the voters. So, and one of the recommendations of the DOR is to have centralized financial management of our town. I should, I should mention, I neglected to mention that we, and we've talked before about having a representative of the MMA Form of Government Committee come out and meet with us and with the Town Government Study Committee. The person who would be coming out on Monday night is Charlie Cristello, who is a former Milton resident, has been a town administrator, I believe in Hingham, is a former, retired now, a former town manager. He was a strong town manager. That's their form of government in Middleborough, and has helped, has a lot of experience with different types of government. The MMA told me that he's their most active speaker from this committee, visits a lot of towns. He's retired now, so he gives a lot of advice to different towns that are going through the charter change process or through form of government changes. So he is available Monday night. He's going to be joining us for the discussion and may have some helpful ideas and suggestions. A number of people from the Government Study Committee know him. Bill's nodding his head, so I'm guessing Bill knows him as well, who doesn't Bill know in Milton.
Good point.
So he'll be probably helping us with this discussion, too. But, so if we can collect comments on the revised job description when we get it, I think that'd be helpful.
I'll send in comments.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yep.
Anything else on this one, then, number two? Number three is an article from the Government Study Committee about creating an audit, really appointing a new audit committee with different, different criteria than what's in our current bylaw.
I've had some conversations with, well, more email conversations than I have also with Rick. I, there were some, there were some wording problems, not so much in the charge of the committee, but, but the selection process and the determining of the scope of the audit services, just the wording was just incorrect. So I think that has been changed now to, you know, it used generally accepted accounting principles where it should have used audit standards and that kind of thing.
They talked about that last night, and I know they were going to follow up.
Yeah.
You want something today?
Yeah, yeah, Rick did call me. I was too busy, and I never got a chance to call him back, but, but I did see the change.
Okay, so they may, they may want you to take a look at.
And then the only other comment I have now, in terms of the charge of the committee, it's fine. I mean, it's, it's consistent with what an audit committee would do. It doesn't have everything an audit committee would do. That was a little bit of a concern to me. But if you take a look, for example, I showed Emery that City of Newton has a full-blown audit committee. It's extensive, I mean, you know, in terms of how they get involved in town government, much more so than just reviewing the recommendations of the management letter, how they get involved in the entire internal control process, the whole whistleblower policy, just everything. They're an integral part of the internal control structure. That being said, that is a very difficult job to do. That may be very difficult to find people willing to serve in that capacity. So I think this is a good start, and like I said, it's certainly consistent with, you know, what an audit committee would do.
Okay. Would this be something we'd want to take up Monday night as well? Or are you and Rick?
I, I'm okay with it. Like, like I said, it's, you know, maybe it's one of those things you do in smaller steps.
And one of the big changes here is that the moderator would.
Would appoint.
Rather than the Board of Selectmen.
Right, which, that's fine.
And there'd be some reporting to town meeting as well as to the board. Some of these articles we're seeing for the first time that, you know, that we have not had before. That one, obviously, you've seen, Tom. Okay, the next one is a quorum article, again, submitted by the Town Government Study Committee. I think we just need to add that under, under the article.
Yep.
Number five is also a Government Study Committee article, and again, this is the first time I've seen this one. This is a bylaw review committee, so this is another recommendation from the Department of Revenue report that came out a year and a half ago. As is number six, which is the OPEB article. So this is to create an OPEB trust. The Government Study Committee is going ahead with this article. This is something that we've talked about at various times with the town accountant, with the town administrator. We, for purposes of people watching, we currently have a stabilization fund. It has about $380,000 in it, and.
There's a slight advantage, and it's very slight because we're not going to be fully funding it. There's, there's a very slight advantage because of playing with the interest rates in terms of having a permanent set-aside trust fund as opposed to a stabilization fund. The liability will be slightly, and, I mean, very slightly reduced. But basically, the discount rate, if you were fully funding a trust fund as opposed to just a stabilization fund, the discount rate that you'd, you'd bring down, because you're really projecting what those benefits are out into the future, and then bringing it down to today's dollars. The interest rate you use if you're having a trust is about half the interest rate that you use when you don't.
Oh.
So, so if you're fully funding it, the liability will be down significantly.
And this is something that about a year ago, we considered submitting this article, but at the time, the accountant had talked, Amy had talked with the actuary who recommended that we didn't really have enough money in the stabilization fund at that time to do it. Obviously, we had another appropriation last May. So we're close to the $500,000 level. We'll probably reach that, or be very close to it at the May town meeting.
May town meeting.
So that was really the level at which the actuaries had suggested we consider going to the trust. So this is a, a good recommendation by the Government Study Committee. Did you want to add anything to this one, Emery?
No, that's, that's fine. You're absolutely correct. When Parker Elmore came in and met with the board, that's exactly what he said, that at that time, we did not have enough in that stabilization fund.
Another thing to keep in mind about a trust is it's irrevocable, as opposed to a stabilization fund, which is, with two-thirds vote is irrevocable.
And we've talked, and probably the Government Study Committee has talked about this as well, at some point, when we finally fully fund the pension, we would be able to transfer the contribution on an annual basis over to this OPEB trust. Okay, number seven is the Information Technology Committee. Again, this is the Government Study Committee article. We did have an IT committee at one point. We, we have not had one for a number of years now. So is that the final one from the Government Study Committee?
No, the three, five member, is that still there, or is that bold?
The three versus five member Board of Selectmen, that came up and was discussed last night. There's no article for that currently.
Okay.
The committee, I stayed for that discussion that the committee had. They, they had a very good discussion on it. It was, it was quite interesting. They've done a lot of research. They had a lot of, a lot of good thoughts, suggestions, very, I thought it was a very good debate, and what they voted was to submit an article to the October town meeting, not to the May town meeting, but to the October meeting for a five-member Board of Selectmen. They're going to use some time in between to.
That's.
Do some outreach, to get the word out, to do some education, to probably make known what some of the research findings are. But a couple of their members had spent quite a bit of time doing research, and I thought they had a really thorough and thoughtful discussion on this last night. So I think that's, so those are the first seven, or the first one is with us.
Is that a charter change, or is that, was that just available in a general law?
No, it would be a home rule petition. Yep.
And charter change?
I believe so. We haven't seen the article, but yeah, I believe so. So I think that's the last one we have from the Government Study Committee. I just want to mention, I, you know, this is a committee that we and the moderator jointly appoint. We have a lot of good, thoughtful people on this committee, and they're really advancing a lot of recommendations from the DOR report. So I think that's good news, that we're not letting that report sit on a shelf. We, we asked them to, we commissioned the DOR report. We asked them to, the Government Study Committee, to look at these recommendations, to come back to us, to study them, and to put some articles forward, and to make recommendations to us, and they've done that. And I think they've done a very, a very thorough job and a very good job, and they've put a lot of thought and a lot of work into this. So thank you to the Government Study Committee members who really have done an awful lot of work and put forward a good result, and some, some good things for town meeting to. of work and put forward a good result, and some, some good things for town meeting to take up. This is, I think this is good news, that they're moving forward on so many different topics here. Article eight is the appropriation for the Affordable Housing Trust. So that's something that we've previously voted to submit, and...
What will the recommendation be?
Well, we voted at the last meeting to request $500,000, so we'll, we'll let the warrant committee know what our request is, I think I told that to the warrant committee chair, but we'll submit it in writing. Dennis, you had raised at the last meeting that it might be a good idea to get some information as to what possibilities the trust might have.
Right, we will do that, we haven't met again since, but who will do that, our next meeting?
Yeah, I thought, I mean, and I started putting together a memo for the warrant committee, just explaining to them why we're requesting the $500,000, what, what the history has been, when we created this trust, when we, who the trustees are, when we create, when we appointed the trustees, and why we're making a request for $500,000 from one-time money, but I think what we could use for that is some information from the trust...
The trust itself, right.
As to what, as to what could be done with the money, and in talking with Kathleen O'Donnell and Emory Fagan yesterday, we, we thought that the trustees might want to consider putting together a presentation at town meeting as to, you know, what the trust is all about, what the purposes are, what the trust, what the trustees are considering.
Mm-hmm.
And this, I know there's not an awful lot of options, so that would be something, Tom, for your group to...
Actually, I think that's essential.
I think it is, too.
Yeah, I totally agree.
You put a presentation that's easily understood.
Article nine, is this something that you want to address, Tom, the Yule and Rink Enterprise Fund?
Uh, yeah, I can address it quickly. Basically, right now, we know we have a five-year operating permit for the Yule and Rink, which is about to expire, it looks like at this point it'll probably be extended for a year. It's kind of up in the air where, where Curry is going from this point, we think that, we were hopeful he'll stay on as, as the rink manager, but we're not sure. We've had many, many discussions with DOR, I mean, DCR, about a 25-year lease on the property, we still think that's a possibility, but we want to, if we're going to do that, we'd like to take back more control of the rink in terms of the town's control of the rink. I think the only way we can feasibly do that would be through a, an enterprise fund, where we've, we've talked a little bit to the park department, the park department seems interested in taking a role, maybe similar to the role that the board of selectmen kind of had over the five-year period in terms of the rink and the oversight of it, and set it up in an enterprise fund where it would have to be a self-balancing, that the user fees would have to pay for the costs, and we'd have to have the ability to set rates that would cover an operating budget plus debt service. So that's the idea of it, and we figure we should at least get the ability to have the enterprise fund, if, if the 25-year lease number comes to fruition, then at some point down the line, we would just disband the enterprise fund, but hopefully it will.
Now, have we actually voted to submit this one, or do we need to take a vote on this tonight?
We need to take a vote on this.
Okay. So we haven't actually voted to submit this one, do we want to vote to include this in the warrant? Tom has done the work on this and worked with town council, I think, on this article.
I'd agree with that.
So would someone like to make a motion? To submit Article N, N9?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we submit Article N, N9, for the May town meeting.
Sorry?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Articles 10 and 11 relate to the Swift Hat Shop. Article 11, we have three different variations on this, and that grew out of a conversation that Emery and I had with town council, John Flynn, the other day. Article 10, these are the art, essentially, even though we've got two modifications on N11, these are essentially the articles that came up last summer and that we considered submitting for the October meeting, we initially submitted them, we pulled them out because there was still some research being done. Article 10 would transfer land at the intersection of Warf Street and Adams Street from the Board of Park Commissioners to our board for general municipal purposes. We had to do some legal research on this, town administrator and I had a call with John Flynn the other day, he's been working extensively with Bill Clark on issues relating to the Swift Hat Shop, there's a number of issues that are still open on this, but John's advice to us was that the, the land currently is under the management and control of the Board of Park Commissioners, so there was a question raised about that last summer, so the park commissioners, for the past hundred years, have been maintaining that property, there was an article from 1912, or 1913?
1918.
18.
Right, you recall?
Transferring that to the, from the, from a Milton Landing Committee, I think, to the park commissioners for management.
Certainly the land with the, the, not boathouse, but the...
The yacht club.
Yacht club is, yeah.
So the, I spoke with Stephen Affenato, the chair of the park commissioners, to see if they were still of the same view that they would be willing to transfer this property to the selectmen, should we decide to go forward with a donation and a move of the Swift Hat Shop to this site. I met with that, so I was a little bit late coming up here, I met with them just before this meeting, their meeting downstairs, and they, they had a brief discussion about it, and they are still of the same view that they do not want the responsibility and the cost, basically, they have really no use for the Swift Hat Shop, but they're willing to transfer this land to the Board of Selectmen for us to maintain and receive for the transfer of the building. Now, obviously, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that would have to happen, still a lot of issues we have to figure out, including what the owner, Mr. Roberts, wants to do with 98100 Adams Street, which is his property. The planner, town planner, Bill Clark, has, has met with Mike Roberts, I think fairly recently, Bill? And you're going to be having, or you've had some follow-up discussions?
Be having more. We've started discussions, we'll have more.
Okay, so we're still in the situation where we've at least confirmed that the land is under the control of the park commissioners, they're still willing to transfer it to us. I emphasized when I was at their meeting tonight that, you know, they may want to hold off on any kind of a vote to transfer it to us, because it's possible that we could accept the building and it could be moved to a different location, it's possible that maybe we try to see, and, and Bill has asked, Mr. Roberts, if we could leave the building in the current location and if there's a way it could be preserved in its current, at the current site, and there's a lot of different things that still have to happen there. I think we thought, when we removed this article back in September, that by the time January rolled around and we're closing the warrant, we'd have some more pieces of this pinned down. There's just so many moving pieces that we're really not, we haven't really advanced the ball too much since September, but we've at least, we've at least done some, Bill has done a lot of historical research on the site, he's talked with Anthony Samarco, Mr. Cronin, others about...
We're reasonably convinced that it's not the site of the Suffolk Resolves?
Well, maybe Bill can speak to that.
Are we or not?
Depends which picture you're looking at.
Okay.
It depends which people you're talking to. We have pictures that date back to the 30s that show a different building on that site, not a park as it's defined right now. We know that the Suffolk Resolves House was where Citizens Bank is now. We have hearsay that the building was moved from up the hill down, down to the hill, down to its location where Citizens Bank is.
Okay.
So its present move would have been the third one that it, third place it would have resided.
So it's possible that the, the original site could have been that?
Could have been, we're not sure, we're listening to hearsay, even the original owner, it was his grandchildren that was saying, well, that house was, he owned, Daniel Vos owned a bunch of different buildings down in that area, several of his buildings wound up getting moved up to High Street, so there's a lot of pieces that have been moved around over time.
Mm-hmm.
We're still looking at the, the ownership issue, there's, there's lots of issues in play. Mr. Roberts is not in a hurry to tear the building down, he would like to try to find a way to, you know, make something come to fruition.
Right. I mean, the bigger concern, I guess, is the longer it sits, the longer it's just kind of exposed to the elements and everything, and not being really maintained, although it is fairly tight at this point, but...
Same point, we're talking about a 4,000-square-foot lot that is both Mr. Roberts' present house and the Swift Hat House together, is a 4,000-square-foot lot.
Right.
I know that Mike did have to do a lot of work to his own house, he put a new roof on a couple of years ago, or last year, I know the Swift Hat House probably needs a roof, too.
Mm-hmm.
I know it needs a foundation.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, these are all, how do we do this? Where do we do this? We're, having those discussions, they're just slow.
Yep.
I mean, if there was a funding source that said, "I'll give you the money to do it," that, that becomes a different issue.
Have we approached Mass Historic? I know, I asked a couple of times, have we approached Mass Historic to see if there's any interest in that building?
Well, we, a resident who was here in the room, Joanna Spinks, did get an historic designation, and I don't believe it was Mass Historic, it was...
It's Preservation Massachusetts.
Preservation Massachusetts, so...
Mass Historic is the one that did the...
Yeah, that's a whole different process and a different level, so...
But I don't know why, why we're not doing that, though, I mean, why not approach them? Why not ask them if there's any interest?
Well, I think we should talk with our historical commission about that, they're very interested, I've spoken with Stephen O'Donnell, and he, they're very interested in saving the house, I think a number of things really need to happen, but the largest piece here is what happens with Mr. Roberts' property, and we've talked about that before, and, and we really need the planning director and, to have some follow-up discussions with Mr. Roberts. The issue is, do we submit these articles tonight? We have a number of citizens, and some of them are here tonight at Citizenspeak, who are very committed to trying to preserve this house, this board has indicated that we would like to try to preserve this property.
I say yes, we submit them and get the ball rolling.
Can I ask a question, Bill? Mr. Roberts, he applied for a demolition permit, is that correct?
He did.
And then he was put into a, is it a nine-month...
Nine-month delay.
Delay?
Yep.
That's expired?
Yes.
So he has the right to go in and get a demolition permit tomorrow if he wanted, is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe so. I don't know that they'd make him go back, because it, he didn't do it within a certain period of time, but I believe he could go in and get a demo permit to take it down now.
He could take it down tomorrow if he wanted, okay. So I think we should submit the articles as soon as we can, so that there isn't any more delay for Mr. Roberts in particular.
We, we want to show, you know, good faith in, in working with Mr. Roberts, he had, you know, there's a contingency, there, obviously, it depends on what can be done with his property as to whether he can afford to pay for a move, but it is still a generous offer that he's made to the town of this property, because he does have the right to demolish it. I think we're in virtually the same situation, where we've had a few questions answered since we took these articles out of the October warrant, but we're in pretty much the same situation, that the articles, there's still a lot more information and a lot more, a lot more that has to be done, but the question is, it's January, we're talking about May, we have a few months where we may be able to, we, we didn't talk, we had talked previously about appointing a committee, I know I suggested that that wasn't the most popular idea at the time, that may be something that we want to reconsider, because we really need someone who's got a preservation background in construction, or preservation, construction, what's the term, Dennis, or...
Historical preservation?
Historical preservation, but someone in development and construction, who, who, we could use some expertise in that area to serve on a committee, if we were to appoint a committee, that's something, is there any further interest in appointing a committee to, to do some of the work on this and to try to, try to resolve some of these issues? I think we also need to ask...
Preservation aspect, I'm not sure about the, I mean, at some point in time, you know, the, how are we going to pay for it, the, you know, what is the use going to be? I know, you know, that obviously, you know, Joanna over here has, has expressed, you know, desire to, to use the place, and I think her plan, you know, sounds, sounds very interesting, and, you know, and you've got to be properly capitalized and everything, but, you know, it's probably not going to be an inexpensive building to maintain and keep up.
No, and there are, there are fundraising sources that we can talk with about potential donations.
So, so a committee to kind of pull that together...
Yes.
But I, you know, and I can certainly see that, the, the preservation architect side of it, I mean, you know, maybe that's best left once you figure out what the use is, I mean, at this point, I think the more important thing is, is, you know, securing the, the rights to the building, and, and, and once we know we can do that, then before we accept the gift, making sure that it's feasible.
Yes. It was just suggested that we might want a preservationist on the, on a committee, if we were to appoint a committee, to, to bring some of that expertise to reuse of the building and, and what could be done there.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, you want, you want to maintain the exterior of the building, because from a historic standpoint, that's the most important.
So the question, you know, the question, I think, for us is, there's a lot of interest among some residents, there's also opposition to moving the property to this particular site, so we've heard from, from various points of view, we've also heard other locations, including the Town Farm, suggested as a location for this particular building if we were to accept a gift of the building. The question for the board, I think, is, are the articles in that category that we talked about a few weeks ago, that they're not ready to go to town meeting at this point? Probably, but because of so many issues available.
I guess, what harms it going to do, you know, and, you know, the ability to accept a gift doesn't mean we have to accept a gift, at least it gives us the authority to do it.
It's conceivable the articles could be referred back for further study.
It could be.
And that has happened with planning board articles sometimes and with other articles, but we also, you know, someone at the government study committee meeting last night in talking, I think it was about the selectmen, the five-member selectmen article, mentioned, you know, if we want to put it forward, that, that gives an opportunity for discussion on it, for debate, for, to move it forward. That might be an approach we take here, but it's possible, I hate to say it, it's possible we could wind up putting the articles in and pulling them out, it's plus, the historical commission chair even suggested, maybe we don't submit the articles now, but we reopen the warrant at a later date if we think a month from now that we're in a better position to add them at that time.
Well, that mightn't be a bad idea, actually. You can always do it the other way, too, leave them in now and pull them to a later date if you want.
So, so, you know, there's uncertainty, none of us want to see the building demolished, and I, it's probably unlikely that that's about to happen anytime soon, but we don't know that for sure. Mr. Roberts wants to know what can be done with his property, we'd like to see, Bill, maybe getting him in front of the townhouse condominium.